All right.
Jake said, "Let's go."
I'd like to open our Emerald Town Council Work Session Meeting for Monday, November 16th, 2020 at this time. We have six items. The first item tonight is we're going to change item three to item one, is the Humane Society Request.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have Megan, right?
Yes.
Bowers, is that right? Megan Bowers of the Humane Society here. She wanted to address the board regarding a program that the Humane Society is initiating and is requesting our consideration for contribution regarding the spayed and neutered project. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm here.
You can come up to the podium if you'd like.
Thank you.
Make the meeting for you.
Hello, and thank you all for inviting me to come and speak with you today. I'm really excited to be here today because we're starting a new project that I feel very passionate about, and I'm excited to tell you about it because I hope that you can see the value of it as much as I do. In 2021, the Humane Society of Warren County is planning to open and operate a low-cost spay and neuter clinic in the town of Front Royal, and I have humbly requested that you consider a sponsorship towards our project, which I feel will have a dramatic impact on our community. Since our beginning in 1947, we have worked very hard to improve our practices and elevate our ability to help the animals and the animal owners in our community. Over the last 10 years especially, we've had wonderful accomplishments. We've achieved no-kill status, stepped up our community programs like our free pet food bank, sought and earned grants for pet owner assistance, and at the beginning of 2020, we changed our policy to ensure that every animal that is adopted from the Humane Society is spayed and neutered before the time of adoption. We've made some great steps, but we are now ready for our next step. With the support of our Board of Directors, we begin this enormous undertaking. There are a great number of groups who will benefit from this clinic, including our local pet owners, our own shelter, our local rescue and TNR groups, and those people who care for or live near our many community cat colonies in Front Royal. For me personally, I'm excited because I see the effects of unspayed and unneutered animals more than most. It can be very heartbreaking sometimes to do the job that I do, to see cardboard boxes of dying kittens come into our shelter every day in the spring, to see our staff crying over tiny lives that never stood a chance, to see unneutered dogs brought in for fighting over what boils down to mating instincts, and to see older mother dogs whose bodies have been through so much now battling mammary tumors surrender to the shelter because their owners cannot afford to have their care done. We live in a community full of pet lovers, however, we also live in a community where people struggle to feed them, struggle to spay them, and struggle to get them to the vet. I have a binder full of residents who come to the shelter every month for free pet food. We know what's needed, and we are willing to do the work, but this project is going to take a lot of startup funding, so we are asking for your support. I would be very happy to answer any questions that you have, and again, I really appreciate the opportunity to tell you about our project, and hopefully, we're looking forward to really great things in 2021. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Can I ask her a question? Okay. Ask her a question.
Anybody? Any questions?
Warren County, is Warren County planning to contribute?
I have sent them the packet of information that they've requested from us, and I believe they will be discussing it in the future.
Sir, I have another question. Are you asking for a specific amount or any amount?
I'm trying to raise $125,000. The first-year budget for the clinic is over $430,000. After the first year, it will support itself completely. The $125,000 that I'm trying to raise, and the shelter is contributing $50,000 towards that amount, is for the initial startup cost plus two months of like normal expenses, rent, veterinarian salary, stuff like that, so that we can get this all started and ready to begin. So just initial costs is what I'm looking for.
Megan, how will pay for the $400-some thousand after the first year?
It's a low-cost clinic. It's not going to be a free clinic, so where there will be opportunities to give people vouchers for free spay or neuter, it's going to be low-cost. It's typically going to be about half to one-third of a local regular veterinarian's office. We are the westernmost, we will be the westernmost low-cost spay-neuter clinic, aside from Stephen City, which doesn't do female dogs or dogs over 20 pounds. So there are a lot of counties, including Warren and West Virginia, where they will be coming to our area to be using the clinic. So our current program gets sold out every time we do it.
So right now?
Oh, sorry. You go ahead.
Right now, you all send them to Harrisonburg, am I right?
Yes, we have a partnership with the Anisir in Harrisonburg, which goes every two weeks. They close down for two months in the wintertime because it's a long transport, so they don't want to get the vehicles on the icy roads and things like that. And that sells out every time that we do it. There's a waiting list. The December 9th trip is booked, and we're done for the year.
So my question was, you're saying that we're closer for areas like maybe Martinsburg and stuff like that? Do you have any plans to ask for any donations from that particular area as well?
I do. I wouldn't be a good executive director if I wasn't asking everybody for money.
Right.
Yes, I've been applying for grants. We've gotten some sponsor. We have gotten one $10,000 sponsor towards the clinic who is a local resident. So yes, we are working very hard to get the money together, and I do not anticipate that this is not going to happen. We've been, our budget's been excellent for the last couple of years. We're still, you know, slowly saving money and ready to take on another big project.
Excellent.
With or without your help, but hopefully with it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a budget request for next year's budget in July forward, because we don't have any money in this year's budget allocated for anything of this nature at this point.
Correct.
You understand it?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
When do you hope to have the $125,000 raised?
My goal is to have it in the first two months of 2021. My announcement to the public for the clinic is going to be on January 1st. We're waiting two months to do that because we've got other initiatives that we're working on right now that'll precede that, and I don't want to conflict with those two items. But I will be making the big push starting in January 2021.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to the first item on our agenda, is review of the FY21 reserves and contingency.
Good evening. Just bringing this back to council here, as we have for the past several months since COVID started there. Just an update on where we're at with our revenues. Just briefly going through here overall, general fund is okay. We're tracking under in some places, over in other places overall. Bottom line, nothing to be concerned about in general fund. Electric revenues have came down, and it's normal for this time of year. We're in the curve months. It's nothing out of the ordinary there going on. Water, it's above right now, but it'll start coming down over the next few months as well. As we go into the winter months, it'll drop off here in November. I already began to see that. Sewer sales are off a little bit, a little bit off pace. This time last year, we were below budget about $56,000. Right now, looking about at $103,000 in sales. Not a lot to be concerned about there, but I am monitoring that one fairly closely. Sewer connections are up a little bit, helping offset those down sales. But usually, we start picking that up in the spring, summer of next year is what we'll be looking for. Solid waste right on target. De-liquin utility accounts, there was an increase in the dollar value for the de-liquin utility accounts. About roughly $60,000 of that equates to one account. It's nothing concerning. It's something that we're addressing there, but it's nothing too concerning. If you take that account out, it would be about $445,000. And the number of active de-liquin utility accounts, as you see, has decreased as well. So overall, not doing too bad there. Would like to get council's input as far as releasing the portion of contingency funds associated with the merit and compensation study, try to implement something by January 1st that would...
Didn't we already say that?
The entire merit and compensation study for the year was $347,000, so...
Didn't we already say that?
I'm sorry?
No, we haven't. We discussed it.
But we put a hold on it.
Put a hold on it because of electric...
Based on the utilities.
Based on the contingency of the governor's... We didn't know exactly what this...
Utility ban.
Utility payments would come down to, and if we would have to cover all those costs.
Yeah.
And then people would start dropping off and not paying.
Yeah, and the utility ban is still in the works. I'd say it's still in the works. It hasn't been approved by the governor just yet. It is part of the budget amendment that was performed to be approved. The update as of this afternoon is that it hasn't gone through as of yet, but it's still included.
Aren't they talking about CARES Act funding dedicated towards that if you have forfeiture for utilities?
So they are talking about allocating $60 million towards the utility payments. What's interesting about that is that the Department of Housing and Community Development is supposed to be facilitating that, and says that more information will be coming in coming weeks. Well, CARES Act money has to be used by December 31st, so it's going to be quite defeat for them to pull off, and how they'll go about it, there's no information out there as of yet if you go to the website. So I don't know. And they've already announced that it would only cover utilities accrued from March through October. So it's going to be quite defeat for them to pull off.
What's the risk that we're taking? What's our exposure if we fully fund the merit increase for employees and then...
$350,000. I mean, that's the exposure for this budget year for the merit.
What do we expect that we're going to end up having to eat on the utilities more than what we currently...
That's really, I mean, if we were to have to stop disconnections through the wintertime, it would be...
Massive. Double.
Yeah. It would be...
But that would impact our enterprise fund, not our general fund, right?
Well, the general fund receives transfers from enterprise funds, so it would impact all funds to a some degree.
I guess what I'm saying is that that's going to be a shared burden of the community, right? We're not going to tank enterprise fund, where it's going to be offset somewhere along the lines at some point.
Correct.
Whereas the merit increases are direct revenues that we have in our general fund to be able to extend it now, right?
Well, the merit and compensation study are across all funds.
Okay.
But they, I mean, $350,000, I mean, it's not going to, it wouldn't be the thing that I would say would make or break us.
But really, more, there's more money taken out of the general fund for the compensation than any other department?
Yes, that is accurate.
Because the police department, everybody's involved in that one.
Yes.
Breakside is, I'm really pleased to see sales tax up.
Yes, sales tax is still chugging along.
We haven't had an update on the tipping fee issue.
Still, no, sir, it's still in the county's hands.
It's in the county's hands.
They're waiting to have their finance director to get on board.
That didn't really win that much, did it?
No.
We wanted to change the procedure, that's... Well, yeah, but as far as $5,000 or something like that.
Yeah, it wasn't significant.
But...
So council, okay with me bringing back some plan to implement merit and compensation study January 1st?
Can I say something about that?
I was just going to ask, what would BJ recommend?
My recommendation is to move forward with it. It is the third year of the compensation study. This has been an ongoing thing. At the very least, I would certainly recommend moving forward with the compensation study. We can bring back some options as far as the merit. Council, okay?
We'll know a lot more in December.
I was just going to say, if there's a way, I'd leave it up to Matt and BJ, but if there's a way to make it happen, I think I said this last time, you know, we committed to this years ago, and the skeptics were saying that a council's going to come on that's going to, you know, put a stop to it, and they would never fully fund the three years. And I really would love to see this get over the finish line and not hold it over our employees, if it's possible. I mean, I certainly want to do, I certainly don't want to do anything that is irresponsible financially to our town's finances, but I'm certainly willing to tolerate a little bit of risk to make sure that our employees get it and that it's not something that's hung over their heads. We even talked about the pay grades and the wages on our lower ends, and if we can get to that third year of fully funding this, I think it'd be, I imagine that we'll get a better vote of confidence from our own employees that we followed through on what we said we're going to do. So if it's possible, without us doing something stupid and our irresponsible...
We were all set to, we were all set to go.
That's what I thought.
Literally. And when the governor did this executive order for the, or not executive, I guess it was, no, it went through a general assembly.
It's going to be a budget amendment.
It went through a budget amendment. But the unknown with that right now, we think, we also believe there's a strong likelihood we'll be able to get a...
Exemption.
Exemption from it, but the language hasn't been formalized just yet.
Exemption or some sort of funding reimbursement? I mean, they can't just...
I just don't see the funding reimbursement happening out of CARES Act. They're never going to get, they're never going to get in place before December 31st.
I mean, maybe not, but do you think that it's a real probability that they're going to say you need a couple million dollars and figure out how to come up with that?
Might.
That's the way it's looking.
I wouldn't be surprised. Would not be surprised.
Where's your faith in government? Just kidding.
Kidding.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't want to put us in any financial jeopardy, but then we spoke about this. I really want to see this thing through as well.
Yeah.
Very good.
Let's plan to have another December 7th. Hit it back on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Get it back on to vote for, or wait to vote for, or you just can do, move forward?
We'll do one more meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll put it on regular meetings to vote in December.
Okay.
Okay. Something I as a nice infrastructure update?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Seelock asked for an infrastructure update, and the timing, I think, was very good. Robbie, you can come on up, your hand is out if you'd like.
Can I ask one more question on that? I'm sorry, before I move on to it. Are we already behind our window of time when we said we were going to implement? So if we wait until December, are we...
I think HR was talking about backdating it.
That's what I was going to ask. Are we going to look at a probation if we do vote?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd make me feel better about the length.
And staff, you know, I got to tell you, I've been really amazed at staff stepping up to the plate. I mean, I've had conversations with departments, and so they know the situation. They know, and they know we're trying to get that merit in.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to this. I asked for this update simply because we're talking about millions of dollars appropriated to this, and I felt like we have not had a full discussion on what we're doing. We see some things going on. We see new asphalt going down. We've seen curbs, we've seen a lot of things happening, but I'd like to have the council fully informed on what we're doing. That's why I asked for it, Tom.
Yeah. The flipper's in your, in that chair.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first page back kind of gives you a breakdown of all the discussion points that we're going to talk about. Just a wide range of infrastructure. Some of these are done, two of these are ongoing, going to be finished up, and then some of these are future projects. First one is the radio read order meter changeout project. Town's currently working on changing out to an automatic meter reading system that allows the meter readers to ride by with a handhelds to have no, never single meter lid. We are currently 72% done with that. Gives you the numbers of how many we've done, and what's left. We just, council just approved last week to order much more meters. We're hoping by mid-spring to have that completely finished, maybe an earlier, depending on how bad winter is. One feature, too, about this, these radio read meters let you hold 96 days of data. So if you have a leak or if you have an issue in your house, you got a real high bill, we can actually go back off the handheld and pull 96 days of data and see exactly when the water was used, what time, how many gallons, all that. It stores it. Next one, probably one of the more popular ones, the I&amp;I project, part of the consent order. This kind of breaks down some of the different work in the basin areas. The first one, of course, is a CIPP lining that Tri-State did in six and seven. They lined 12,194 feet of sewer mains and did 66 sewer laddles. Gives you, costs are $745,228. The sewer replacement, that was either from pipe bursting from Portland or open cut. They did 3,590 feet of mains and laddles. That was $946,914. The basin frame hole, manhole frame and covers, that's actually still going on, should be finished this month. Bush Homes working on that. And right now, it looks like that's going to come in as a projected cost of $439,732. Manhole rehabilitation, 220 manholes to be sealed. Business sewer got a late start. They were actually the first contractor ready to start, but because of the slip lining and the manhole frame and covers, they had to be held back. They'll be finished probably mid-December, and that's going to be $206,748. Hydrostructures, they've cambered 787,000 linear feet of sewer main, 491 sewer laterals, and that cost was $509,536. There's a few pictures at the end of some of the stuff that they found for upcoming work. They can be kind of surprised. Happy Creek sanitary sewer line replacements, this is for the bridge there at, by pavement. This is where we had talked at time about where it causes the issues on back by the flea market and the pool hall and all that. They have finished the 59% design. There's a storm drain in the 14-inch water line all crosses there, so there had been some stuff moved around, but we're hoping here in the next few months to get all that done and keep that moving forward. Right now, the projected cost of that's with the creek crossing is $657,650. Smoke testing, that's what's been done here in the last few months. We did 187, or 180,000 linear feet of smoke testing, $300,000. And then the other total footage gives you the last couple of years since we've been working under the consent order, working on all the smoke testing. Gives you all that.
That smoke testing, is that 300,000?
30,000.
30,000.
Okay. I thought you said 300,000.
I'm sorry. I made that.
You're good.
Here's a few pictures of some of the stuff that Hydrostructure's found for upcoming stuff, and we got a packet of probably six pages. Like here, you can see the whole pipes going. Here, the whole sewer mains is completely going. There, it's broke out. You can actually see the rock, and it says land there. So that just gives you some of the ideals, some of the stuff for the next phase.
And I can tell you that the bypasses have been, that could be some of them weather-related. We've had a tremendous lower amount of bypasses this year.
Yeah, we had one in September, we had four inches of rain in an hour. And I mean, we had all the pumps running, wide open.
Yeah.
But it was so much rain.
They run a camera down there and they identify that, and next up, they have to go find that and fix it, or just stay like that?
No. Well, as bad as these are, these will actually have to be dug up. You know, if it was just cracked up some, you could line it, but these will actually have to be dug up and repaired. But yeah, like, back to what you were saying, but yes, with getting the solids out, you know, and, yep, absolutely, it's definitely starting to show. Paving projects. First one, well, first, North Shandow Avenue, I mean, fourth, I'm sorry, 14th Street from North Shandow Avenue to North Row Avenue, that was a VDOT primary extension project. They reimbursed us for that completely. Total cost of that was $196,618. This breaks down some of the ones we did in that one area, Highview, Scott, Steel. Bel Air was kind of off of Six where we did that, and then the alley paving for this year gives you kind of some of the paving that was done. This picture here is Steel Avenue, of course, there's at 14th and Shandow. This talks some about the upcoming paving. Parkview originally was going to get done with Scott Steel and Highview. We didn't have the money to pay to have the curb put in, so we did it in-house, which put us behind. So we have the money for that come spring. Leach and North Street is another one to get curb and gutter and paving. Braxton coming down the hill there to poke. Wyans Street and Evelyn Court are some of the ones in this year's coming up paving plan.
Just made a move to get Wyans Street fixed, huh? Is that what you're telling me?
VDOT smart scale, we talked about this a while back. The application's been in for the smart scale. Projected cost was $2,406,935. That is a 100% funded program if it's chosen. It will go to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and it will evaluate it and then recommend which projects will be approved in January. If it's approved, it would be August 1st, 2025, before the engineering funding would be turned loose, and construction would start in 2028, 2029 if approved. That just gives you the little most updated drawing with the figures. We put in for three revenue sharing projects. Out of those three, the only one that got funded was this one here for the North Shandow Avenue lights. We think because of all the fatalities a while back is probably what had made it. The project cost for the lights for the full project is $265. Of course, through revenue sharing, VDOT would pay for half. Now, because of the COVID this year, the one thing, this was considered a priority-two project. Only priority-one projects will get funding this year.
What?
So any priority-two, it'll be FY25 or '26 before you can get the funding for the revenue sharing. Now, we did send them an email, because revenue sharing is usually every two years, so there actually should be another cycle revenue sharing in between, but we haven't heard back to see what's...
How do they determine a priority-one for a priority-two?
VDOT just does it based off, you know, of the needs, you know, and those kind of things. Some, like most of all, there wouldn't have been a couple priority-ones, and all of them were like, you know, like bigger places, you know, I guess with a lot more traffic volume and that kind of stuff.
Okay. What do you think our chances are of getting the lighting improved at least on South Street?
You mean through VDOT?
Yes.
I mean, this got approved, good possibility with the fatalities.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we could put it in the next revenue sharing, you know, like this one. But yeah. Prospect Street...
Would they do that, would they do that outside their master plan? Would they do that in pieces like that? We would have to make applications for revenue sharing. They wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to get any kind of emergency funding, I don't believe.
I think you're talking about smart scale.
Right.
And with it, I don't know, that being that far out, I would think with, with the safety being the thing, I would think that, you know, that they would work with you, because it's going to go through them anyways, they're going to review it, you know what I mean? So you could, they could kind of work with you to offset, so it wouldn't create issues down the road with that.
We definitely are trying to do that.
Okay.
There's enough lighting from the sheets now. Don't have to worry about it.
Well, that's, that's a good one.
It lights it all up.
That's, that's why, you know, 25, 26, crazy. Five years.
Prospect Street Bridge...
For South Street.
Did not get funded, but we did have all the money in there, budgeted.
Correct.
So we can still move forward with that.
That really looks good, by the way.
Oh, St. Will.
Great, you did.
Yes, sir.
Jackson.
Yes, sir. The other one that didn't get approved was the North Row Avenue paving between 14th Street and Commerce, but I'm pretty sure we got the money still for that, correct?
Yes, we're going to take some of the money out of what we'd set aside for the street lighting, because we had the full amount of the street lighting and move it over, so we have enough money.
Yeah, because we have half, yep. Okay. But that kind of tells you about the VDOT...
And again, the theory behind that, members of council, just so you know, is considering now the sheets is on the eastern side of the road, and the lighting is so much more improved now, we had a meeting, we thought it'd be better to shift that money towards the bridge, Prospect Street Bridge.
I bet you that that probably alleviated a lot of people running across that gas station, which is where we're having that problem anyways.
Exactly.
Because now there's food options on the other side of the street.
Well, they're staying at the motel that, where Sheets is at now, so there's nobody
Well, they're staying at the motel that where Sheets is at now, so they don't, there's nobody there.
Correct. Yep. So, we felt pretty confident in making that decision. We thought it was the right, right call to make.
Uh, the next one is the one Mr. Tegwell had, uh, just talked about. This is the East Stowe Bridge, uh, finished up in September of this year. Uh, this is a picture during when they had to take out a bunch of uh loose and bad concrete. And then the far right picture shows you afterwards, once epoxy and everything was done. Um, of course, this was done based off the VDOT's annual reports. Um, they did do some small repairs underneath, um, patching and stuff, and cleaned around it. Um, the deck was milled down, like I said, concrete repairs and a new epoxy overlay put on top and uh new expansion joints. I'll put that in there. We got new expansion joints as well. Um, Eighth Street, this was done a while back. Um, down, this is down by the stadium. Um, this has kinda been a hot topic on the other sides, just to kinda show, uh, this is Eighth Street Bridge before, and this was kinda towards the end here. Um, this was done August nineteenth through September nineteenth, um, to reduce the flooding under Eighth Street Bridge. Um, and it, it doesn't flood near as much. Of course, like I said, in September, we had four inches of rain in an hour, you know. And it does dip down, so it still floods. Uh, we don't get near as much trash though, and debris's caught up in the culverts in the bridge. Um, the couple houses up the creek, they said it has really helped them. You know, they haven't got to water in their basements no more and stuff. Uh, Mr. Doxson and Mr. Jenkins both were thrilled. Um, you know, and it helped with, you know, all the stuff, like I said, worsening down.
Again, just to, just to reiterate, um, the same engineering firm, the same actual engineer, um, that put the permits in through, uh, what was it, VMRC, is that right?
VMRC.
VMRC and uh-
US Army Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers.
Yes, sir.
Along with input from DEQ and Game and Inland Fisheries, and they call something else now. Um, the same group is the one that did the permitting for this deck space that he's gonna show you, that, that we're having some, um, questions about. And so, um, on this portion, they did not, they did not need an uh ENS plan. They were not required by the county to do an ENS plan. I had a meeting Friday with the engineer, and uh the engineer admitted that because of the s- scale, the size of the improvements we were making on this new space of Happy Creek. Um, there's a code section that says if you're disturbing more than ten thousand square feet, is that right?
Yeah, there was different points, ten thousand and, yep.
Yeah, different thou-, so it fell within a range that we, we could have been required to submit an ENS plan. Um, of course, you know, one could argue that if it passes DEQ, if it passes VMRC, if it passes US Corps of Engineers, you would think we wouldn't need an ENS. But that's what we're waiting on now, with the ENS plan is submitted for the next phase of this. Um, we do have approval, and you can flip the slide, slide there. We do have approval to, um, to go ahead and start back the uh, the cutting of the brush. So that's gonna start up again tomorrow. We got a public notice. We're gonna be putting out on that, so that will be starting back up tomorrow. There will not be any uh earthwork, any, any disturbance of the ground, just the cutting of the, of the trees. Um, Robbie, I'll go ahead and let you do this and I'll, because you got pictures next, right?
Yes, sir.
Pictures, yeah. Go ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your presentation.
This, uh, so this is the, one of the uh drawings that was done by the engineer. It shows you cleaning out the sediment and stuff, and then armaring the bank. And then you got your trees on the top there. Um, this kinda shows you there and then your water level. Um, and like we've talked about, you know, this was to offset a civil charge as part of the DEQ's consent order. Um, due to the uh effluent and overflow bypasses at the wastewater. Um, the original civil charge was thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen. Um, they only made us pay thirty-nine hundred and fifteen dollars. But we have to spend at least thirty-four, seven on doing work along the creek, um, as an improvement, as a project.
Um, before you move off that, so I made a misstatement in a public notice, um, and I went down with Robbie and we did a site inspection. So, along the bank, um, the, we are, we are trying to keep trees that are four inches or larger, um, along the bank. Because the chipper can't chip up anything larger than that anyways. Um, in this section is where we clear out, we clear everything out, right, Robbie?
Yep.
And that's based on, that's based upon the VMRC permit?
Army Corps.
Or Army Corps went to VMRC?
Both of them, right? Or, or VMRC's water, uh, Corps does the banks and the water.
Okay. So, by permit, we're supposed to clear out here, and we're trying to keep the larger trees on the bank and put the riprap around the larger trees. There is a section, um, down close to the South Street Bridge, y'all with me? Okay? Uh, we had a contractor came in, and over the course of several days, the contractor was working their way up from the creek up to the bank. And, um, the con, the, upon inspection, we inspected every day their work. Upon inspection, we found out that the contractor did cut some trees larger than four inches, and he wasn't supposed to cut the trees, so he got pulled off the job. Um, so there was a section down towards the South Street Bridge that some of those larger trees got cut out. The willow tree, as was mentioned, as I mentioned Monday night, that tree was already dead. Uh, we did not cut that tree out as part of this project. It was cut out, uh, four, four months ago.
Um, this, you just kinda talked about what we talked about the other week, you know, thirteen hundred feet. Um, remove any of the materials and vegetation to help the flow, gives you all your permitting. Um, reporting requirements, because since, you know, we have to spend so much, we have to go to show where we spent that money.
What's the fourth, so there's already three agencies that have reviewed this?
Four. Actually, four.
Four.
The fourth, which one's the fourth?
DEQ.
No, so you got DEQ, you got-
Game and Inland Fisheries.
Uh, VMRC.
Oh, I'm sorry, DMQ, Virginia.
Yeah, because actually it was a deal with DEQ.
So, but before last Monday night, it had went through three of these agencies?
Four.
And now it's going through the fourth?
No, it's gone through four agencies. And now it's at the county building inspector's office.
Yeah, the, the only thing is what the counties for is this ENS. Um, far as all the actual other work, they went through all four of them. And then-
Prior to the project starting.
Yeah, so the engineer came up Friday. Um, we met with the, met with the uh building inspector. Um, building inspector had questions based upon the per, the application that was submitted. Um, based upon the conversation that Robbie, the engineer had with the building inspector, were pretty optimistic, thinking you're gonna be moving forward.
They do a site, site review as well, uh, prior, or as part of the application process?
The Corps.
Any of those agencies?
No.
I don't believe so. Just, yeah.
And just, uh, the, the inland game and fisheries and DEQ send their comments to the VMRC. So the only two actual people that, that issue a permit is VMRC and Army Corps. Um, so like, for us, we don't actually have any interaction with the inland game fisher or DEQ. Um, they send all ours to VMRC, and then, and they deal with us from there.
And again, I, you know, part, part of my disappointment in this is I wish, you know, I wish we'd had the ENS. I wish the engineer put forth an ENS plan, uh, or advised us that we, he needed it. I wish that was the case. But regardless, it's gonna look really nice when it's finished, but right now it's ugly. Right now it's not, you know, we're not finished. Um, there are still stumps there. They're gonna be removed. Um, uh, next spring, we hope to plant trees, work with the uh, the tree stewards and other organizations, and plant trees along the top part of the bank to really beautify that area. Um, I've gotten frankly, I've gotten, I have gotten a couple of phone calls from some of the uh individuals, the tree stewards and various uh environmental organizations. But I've gotten a lot of phone calls. I was at the grocery store this weekend, and someone came up and just said, and they're just really happy that we're cleaning, cleaning that area up. A lot of it is shrub brush. I mean, it's just poplar wood, it's just nasty. Well, you'll see pictures.
You see it's the roots- Some of them before, and then here shows you where how bad some of the, the roots, yeah, were washed out.
I just wanna make a comment to, this is not the first time this has happened. Um, I grew up right there near that creek. This has happened twice, two or three times since, and like I said, you know, it's not the first time.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think the last time it was done was when the bike trail went through. You guys went through, cut all the undergrowth down, and it really looks nice. And, and believe me, from people in the neighborhood, other than, than a few other people who came down and spoke, uh, it's positive.
Okay.
Positive reaction. Um, and, and like I said, there, there's a lot of drug use that goes on down through that stuff. And, and, and like I said, me personally, having a, a, a bike path walking trail there, I would be extremely cautious. And if something ever happened, you know, if, if my wife was walking down that path, and, and I'm, you know, God forbid, you know. It's better that it's cleared out, where, you know, to make people more aware of, of what's going on. Just my opinion. Um, but yeah, thank you all.
Well, thanks. And you're right, because um, there's, there's riprap along a large section facing Commerce where the, the, the one-walk path is. And, um, and you'll, but you'll see in, in the parts where there's no riprap, you'll see the erosion, the erosion. There's been significant erosion in that area.
Some on Commerce, but it kinda echoed what you were saying too. We did get a call this week from UFAC, Urban and Forestry Advisory Committee. And Jay, probably gonna say this right, Len, Lenam, Manam? But uh, he uh, he had called and just said, you know, we got done, that they would be more than happy to help us, you know, come up with a tree design or pick trees, you know, help any way they could and stuff. And I mean, he was, you know, very nice and, like I said, offered his help.
So the plan is that on the banks, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So the plan is that all this stuff, you know, especially that middle picture, like all that stuff is being removed. And just like near Eighth Street, there's gonna be large stone along the banks to hold that in place.
Mm-hmm. Well, there'll be, there'll be filter paper underneath, filter fabric, and then, but yeah, then there'll be riprap on top.
But there isn't any plan necessarily to replant anything along the sides of the bank, right?
No, not yet.
Not the sides.
Right, not the sides, but up at the top, where there will be trees-
Yeah.
In the future, okay. I just wanted to make sure I, you know, those are the questions you can get.
And we're gonna try even on the, like on the others, if we can hold it back a little bit to leave room, you know, so we know we got enough for trees. You know, try to work, you know, to make it work.
Sure. If there's a good, if there's a good quality tree, a good hardwood or a good quality tree on the bank, that's four inches or greater, they're keeping it.
Right, right.
But, you know, if it's a-
Yeah, lots, yeah. Well, and like I said, like this here, I mean, you can see how bad those were, the roots were washed out.
Well, Robbie, it hasn't been that many years ago when we had that whole section flooded from Main Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Because I came on, that's the first thing I heard when I came on council four years ago. When are you gonna clean Happy Creek and stop the flooding? So, to me, this really makes sense. I've been an advocate of this for, before you were logging on council.
I just wanna say, make one other point to what Bill's saying. Where the storm pipe is, where it comes into Happy Creek, it, there's not a lot of difference. So, every time there's a big rain and that creek comes up, all that storm pipe backs up. And you can see it shooting up out of the manholes, back on Poland, uh, even over as far as Ridnaw. And I woke the gentleman up right there at the corner of Prospect and Poland. There's a, there's a white house that sits back there. Woke him up, me and, and a cousin of mine, because it was flooding one night, and this has been several years ago. But when he opened up the door, that was where all that water come from. It comes right down Poland, uh, up out of the manhole when there is a heavy rain like that.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, it, he, when he opened up the door, I kinda feel bad, because when he opened up the door, that's when all the water kind of, you know, ran in.
So you flooded his house?
Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much, but, you know.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, next one is the uh five twenty-two parallel water line. Um, they just kinda shows you what's been done. Thirty percent da, uh, design's been completed. Um, submitted some railroad permitting, uh, geo-tech, uh, geotechnical work. Uh, they had a barge out by the golf course and did some, some work out there a while back. Um, first round of easement letters went out in October, and the second round should be going out probably this week. Uh, working with VDOTs about utilities and uh, well, it's the electric department, uh, for the pump station that's actually gonna be inside the wastewater fence. Um, so far, engineering cost up to date is four hundred thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, they're currently working on the sixty percent uh design documents and bid specifications. Um, encroachment of uh agreements and rightaways, um, and the easements, uh, like I said, second round of easements is going out the eighteenth. Um, some more surveying. Um, that here gives you a kind of a rough line of the sixty, ninety, and one hundred percent. Uh, one hundred percent is for bid-ready documents. That would be in March of twenty twenty-one. Um, projected cost is twelve million. Um, on that. Anybody have any questions on that? Um, recent waterline projects, um, North Shandow Avenue, um, this was before we talked about the paving. Uh, there's a twelve inch on the uh Speedway side, used to be the Hess side. There's a six inch on the United Bank side. Um, so we went through in Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Seventeenth, and Eighteenth, each one of those intersections, and we tied the six and the twelve across Shandow Avenue together, um, to help the, the water. Uh, we did Fourteenth Street, used to have an old six-inch water line on, if you ever noticed, it never had any fire hydrants, down Fourteenth Street by melting pot in the motels and stuff.
Hmm.
Um, so we put a ten-inch water line in off of the twelve, um, and put fire hydrants in. There's also a ten-inch line that cuts across Virginia, so we tied it in, so that way it was all looped. Um, and this was also based off the water model that was done the other year. Uh, Bel Air Avenue was upgraded from four-inch transite to six-inch cast, and then we, you know, replaced some fire hydrants. Uh, for those couple of projects, the target cost was five hundred fifty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred and forty. Um, this, like I said, this is kinda off of the paving with the other one too. Uh, we did steel, uh, Scott, Highview, and Parkview, all those up in there. Um, any services that was galvanized, we replaced, replaced the mains, put new valves, um, you know, replaced the hydrants. The cost for those couple of streets was four hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety. Um, this coming year, uh, talked about the pavement, they did get approved, but we have the money for. Um, North Row Avenue, um, from Fourteenth down to Commerce, um, the plan is to extend the, the ten inch down to there and then tie back in. Uh, the water model shows eventually that we do roll, taking the bigger line on down to Main Street where the twelve comes across and tying it in. So that way, that's tied in all the way up through, and then you got the twelve that comes down. Um, but the price for that, that we have budgeted roughly, our ideals, about four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty. Um, and then Braxton Road is an old transite, uh, four-inch water line. Uh, so to replace that from upper top at least down to Pope, looking at about two hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty. Um, we're hoping we can find enough money to maybe do Manassas, um, Avenue this year, so we're trying to look and see what we can find. Um, you know, with all the sewer work going up there, and it's got transite, it'd be nice. So we're still kinda kicking that around. Uh, water storage tanks, um, Guard Hill, um, was done, uh, this year. Um, this was done underneath our service maintenance contract. Um, all of our tanks except for five twenty-two north are on a service maintenance contract. So we pay on an average about thirty grand a year. Um, they come in here every year and inspect it, and if they need any work, they cover it under that service maintenance contract. Um, see this year, um, three-mill gallon tank was drained down. Um, interior was completely sand vested, a bare metal. Um, got two uh coats of primer intermediate and then one finish coat. Um, tank exterior was cleaned, um, some spot repairs was needed, and then they got two uh finish coats, and then there was some uh vents, uh, that were replacing. Some seals along the base at the bottom and the hatch, um, for that one. And this one was completed right after five twenty-two, once five twenty-two was put back in service, we took this one out while they were here, um, on site. Um, they said five twenty-two, uh, this is the first time this tank's ever been out of service since it was built. Um, I thought I'd put the year in here.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
When the night, okay, I was thinking eighty-seven, ninety-seven, okay. Uh, but this gives you a breakdown of the tank, um, and it got everything. Uh, tank exterior was, you know, power wars, spot repairs, got painted. Um, replaced vents, seals, um, gaskets. Uh, this one, the main thing with this one that was kinda different, because this tank had never been offline. And we didn't know how to, if, if there was a fire at one industrial from five twenty-two, you know, would we have enough water? Um, so they did a, a tank offline plan. Uh, we met with the fire chief and the fire marshal, did a bunch of testing. And uh, if we, you know, we figured out if we turned Guard Hill and turned the pumps up, that we could pump enough, even if they had a bad fire, to meet what they needed out of five twenty-two, you know, for a short period anyhow.
Well, they weren't having a hiccup for almost three to five minutes, thing, uh?
No, no, not one, not a little, no. Thankfully, everything was just quiet. But the total cost for that was nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred, and it gives you a breakdown of all the, where all that money went. That's it's cheap.
Robbie, you missed one thing on the tank, Bill.
Our logo?
That big nice, that big nice red canoe that has four on the side of it. That was the only thing they missed.
We could do it.
Hey, Mary Ellen up there.
Yes, sir.
She's dying to paint.
She said, "No."
We got a pretty big extension line.
That's a nice.
Any other question? That's great, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. That, that was great.
Robbie, that was awesome. Thanks, sir. Yes, thanks, Robbie.
Thanks so much.
Okay, next line, by the four, continue.
Okay, next slide, by the fore, continued weekend closure of Main Street.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, we're scheduled to um, close Main Street November thirtieth, um, per previous uh, public notices. Um, um, citizen came and spoke and wanted us to continue to close it through the winter. Um, it goes against my previous notice, but I wanted to get input from council. In addition to that, considering next week is Thanksgiving week, um, do you want Main Street closed on Wednesday afternoon and closed at Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Uh, or, um, I prefer not to bring staff in on Friday.
No.
Um, pay them time and a half, cause I'm cheap. Um, but I wanted to get some guidance from you regarding next week and get some guidance from you as it relates to closing during the winter.
Next week, I'd say definitely Wednesday. And winter, I, I say keep it open, especially with the new closures and stuff coming down. If they can put the heaters or something out there, by all means.
Keep it open or closed?
I mean, yeah, close, that's what I mean.
You've eliminated the traffic problem with routing around now to get to the parking suburb. I, I would utilize the staff on their workday rather than bringing them in.
I like it. I mean, if, if we hear, um, if we hear complaints or something along those lines that we can address, um, then I think we can take them as one offs. You, you routing around on Chester?
Through the parking lot.
Oh, through the parking lot.
Since we moved, we moved it down further.
Okay.
We moved it down to the science.
Matt, if uh, if, if you and Robbie could, just, um, could you put together an estimate proposal to see what, um, you know, cost is going to increase as far as possibly shutting it down there? I mean, you know, I, I just, you know, want something less hideous other than the traffic games and, and, and the, and the.
We have bowlers, you talking about bowlers?
Yeah, the bowlers.
Yeah, we have, we have, um, we have bowlers. The question of it is, is that we haven't quite, well, maybe we have, um.
What section to shut off?
It keeps moving.
No, I think you just keep Chester around and then look to do the other one. No?
I'm telling you, there's just no good answer.
Yeah.
Trust me.
It's hard to make everybody happy.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem.
Matt, make everybody happy.
Make everybody happy. But we do, we have, we have actually canisters, right?
We, yeah, we do. And I was gonna say, one other thing too, just keep in mind, depending on how we close it, you know, right now we're using water filled barriers, so the colder it gets, you know, Mondays, we have to dump that water on Main Street, you know, on both ends, you know. Just, you know, it could freeze up, that plastic's not real thick on them.
Put in freezing water.
You know, I mean, we still have the bowlers on both ends, you know, and we have extra canisters, but just to thought, you know, as cold weather comes.
What are we gonna talk about? Well, maybe a time for another day, but um, but I think we should talk about some sort of, you know, permanent plan with it. I mean, listen, people um, were, uh, we brought this up, you know, three years ago, and people had a lot of concerns. We never got traction on it. Then COVID happens, and lo and behold, we were forced to do it, and come to find out, a lot of people like it, um, on the weekends. And I bet you they'd like it even more if there was more permanent structures and paving and everything else down that direction. Um, and so I think we should look at, uh, what it would look like to be a one lane road through there with patio or something, or just completely closed down through there. What are you making faces? Do you have an opinion on it?
This is asking.
I would be really interested in, you know, getting either a public opinion poll or, um, you know, gauging the appetite on, uh, what it would look like if stores were actually able to expand out in patios in that area.
Yeah.
I like that.
I'd want it completely blocked off, like no one lane, nothing, just.
Going back, parlaying off of Councilman Mays' comment, when we entered into that situation on the discussion of closing down Main Street, the point was, people couldn't get their deliveries to their front door. And if we had any, any complaints, I've only heard one since I've, since we've been doing this.
Well, complaints related to that, no.
But they're delivering during the week, right?
Right. See, but see, you gotta realize, Loud Street, Loud Street Mall was floundering for years. And they, they have delivery trucks coming down middle Loud Street malls during the week at certain times, et cetera, et cetera. But it wasn't until, um, uh, the association, we formed an association and, and hired a marketing company to actually market the mall. Market, and, and it exploded. It, it boomed. Um, and it's, was very successful prior to COVID, and I think even now, still successful. Um, so that's part of a plan. We could, I can get with, um, Tim and planning department, and we can initiate some discussions about that and what it would be, and put it in a budget next year to, to start going through that process.
I think like, conceptually, we should look at it. Now that everybody has a bit of a feel, like what would it look like if it was, if it was closed down? How much square footage would each restaurant or lot be able to gain? You know, would they be able to put up like a canopies or fencing or extra tables and things like that? What would it look like if we left a one lane through there? Not saying that we have to do that, just saying that if that alleviates some of the concerns, you know, how much space would we gain in doing that and remove the parking through there? What happens if we remove the parking through there? Where else would we have the parking? So I just think that it'd be worth talking about some conceptual designs, and I think if people saw that, it might gain some momentum, especially since we've already test ran this for, for months and months. I agree.
I know one of the concerns, or at least the, when you were talking about deliveries or whatever, the other thing that we heard were people that lived there, that apparently there's a lot of apartments, you know, above the stores of Main Street, and about people trying to get their groceries and stuff. But I know one of the residents, when I spoke with their, they, I spoke with them, they were concerned, but they said they had learned to adjust, and they got their groceries during the week, because they knew they wouldn't be able to take anything up the stairs on the weekend. So I'm just saying, even the people, residents on Main Street have adjusted.
They're not supposed to park there anyways.
I mean, they could take their groceries up the stairs anytime.
I know, but, but it's getting closer to where they have to.
Well, they, yeah, they just wanna park.
Right, yeah, but you can't park there.
They have a parking center also.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
I just don't like Jake was saying, three years ago, it was, you know, uh, we, we got burned up over that. And, um, you know, it was not a lot of support for it. But now, it, it seems to be picking up. And, um, I just, you know, I'd like to see, you know, just, just for discussion.
Okay. So, as it relates to December first, uh, that, in December, January, we got a problem with water barrier, cause we're not gonna fill it up, we'll crack some, crack the plastic. I mean, do we really think people are gonna be out using it on weekends in thirty, twenty degree temperatures?
So I agree, I, I.
Well, no, I was gonna say, I mean, here we are in the middle of November, and the weather's been really nice. I mean, we, the, even last year, we really didn't have much of a winter. I mean, in February, in February last, or this, this year, it was like sixty degrees, whatever, you know, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I definitely think that first weekend December is the Christmas parade, the down.
I think they rewrote it though, just not gonna do it on this.
Right, but I'm, but I'm saying though, it's gonna have people out. So I don't know if that's, if they're gonna have planned things or anything.
I, alright, I'm, I'm worried that if we stop it, that it's gonna be very difficult to get back. Just saying.
I say just keep it.
Yeah, but they can.
Keep it closed until the weekend, see the first of the year.
Why can't we just keep it, plan on keeping it closed, and if it becomes a huge issue or there's public outcry or something along those lines, we can evaluate it then?
Um, Robbie, this, so the concern is the water in the burial, barriers, the colder it gets, could freeze in there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and so far, we've been good. It might be for a while, you know, and we thought about, you know, maybe something we could put in it. Of course, you know, you gotta be careful, cause we're dumping it out on, on the ground, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Yeah. But, I mean, yeah, that would be on, cause, uh, there's, the actual plastic on them's not as thick as you think. And, um.
Yeah.
And stuff, but yeah, just, you know, just a thought.
We'd probably go back to the bowlers and the canisters. Remember, we talked about doing canisters?
Yeah, I have the extra canisters. Yeah, I have them in, you know, and I have, you know, the bowler.
Is, is there a concern because of the, I mean, during the winter?
I'm here to tell you right now.
All the work for no reason.
Yes. Well, yes, there's gonna be work for no reason. No one's gonna be using it, and you're gonna be getting phone calls, why is Main Street closed, and no one's on Main Street.
Can we keep it to the end of the year?
Do whatever.
Can we keep until everybody complains?
Yeah, let's do it till people, yeah.
We can blame it on, we can blame it on Matt.
That's on camera. Wait, are you sure they're wrong?
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, can, can we extend it to December thirty-first?
We can do whatever, whatever council wants me to do. I work at your pleasure.
December thirty-first?
I'm good with that.
Cause I think Christmas is gonna be really pretty, and people are gonna be down there shopping at the smaller shops and stuff. I think that's gonna be nice.
I'll say, keep it through December.
Alright, so I'm gonna extend it to December thirty-first.
We get some Christmas lights on the bowlers.
So we get something.
If anybody's complaining, it's called Councilman Jake Mesa and Councilman Chris Holland.
One on Jake in January.
I told you, you know Jake. Chris's cell phone's listed.
Yeah.
Blowing up already.
Alright, number five, special use permit for non-conforming lot on Grand Avenue.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a little unconventional. Um, we, and I'll, Tim, you're here. Do you wanna give them a quick briefing? Um, and usually we would have, planning commission would fully review it, and then we would bring it to a work session, and then we would take it to a, uh, regular meeting. We're trying to, um, it, it's, according to staff, it's not a problem. This non-conforming lot issue's not a problem. So we're trying to shave off a couple of weeks for the applicant. Tim, do you wanna give them a quick summary?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Matt. Yeah, what we're trying to do is, it's a little out of order. The planning commission will have their public hearing on it on Wednesday, but if we didn't have it before you this evening, then the applicant would be waiting until January for the public hearing, so that's why we went a little bit out of sequence. Uh, unique to the R one district, and, and this district, and the town, you know, has no shortage of non-conforming lots, but in, in the R one district, there's a requirement that if you do have a non-conforming lot, you cannot build or develop on that lot unless you receive an approval either administratively or through this council. And it all depends on the degree of non-conformity. If it's less than twenty percent, uh, it's an administrative review decision. If the non-conformities are, are greater than that, it has to come through this council. And there is a criteria, uh, actually an algebraic equation of sorts, in the ordinance that that has to be met. Uh, this particular application, the applicant is proposing to purchase two lots, to combine those lots. Uh, each of the lots is non-conforming in both size and width. The combining of the two lots does accomplish one of the objectives in that the, the new lot will be conforming. It will be over the ten thousand square feet, but it still will not meet the seventy-five feet width requirement. These are twenty-five foot wide lots that we see circulating, uh, along Grand Avenue. And that's why that, that degree of non-conformity is, it's coming to you. The applicant is proposing a home size of eighteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. Um, we have calculated the area that's supposed to be used for comparative value, and what the ordinance states is that we take, there were fourteen homes, we took the average size of those fourteen homes, the total square footage, and you come up with a value of two thousand and fifty square feet. For comparative purposes, the ordinance says that you take sixty percent of that value for comparison's sake. That brings it down to one thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. And then it goes on further to state that the house that's being proposed has to be at least ninety percent of that value, or one thousand one hundred and seven square feet. So the proposed home does actually exceed the, uh, mathematical requirements for comparative value and is actually closer to the average home size of two thousand and fifty than it is of the ordinance standard of one thousand one hundred and seven, in terms of.
So they could build it.
Yeah.
I'm like, let him do it.
It, it will eliminate, you'll, you will eliminate one non-conforming lot, and the one lot, one non-conforming lot that will be remaining will be conforming in size, but it will not be conforming in width. Staff doesn't find problems with the size of the home, the architectural styling of it. Uh, we have received some, some objections to tell you from some of the residents, uh, along, along the street.
And what would they be? That, I was gonna play devil's advocate. What is the, what, what would be, what would be the reasoning why somebody wouldn't want to see this turn into a lot they could give them a tax.
I guess if I, if I was to summarize the objectives, objectives that we, uh, have received, it's because of allowing smaller homes, uh, in this neighborhood. But in looking at, at this home, uh, it is a two-story home, and you know, there, there's a whole diversity of architecture and construction types and materials on this street, so there's not one monolithic or theme through there. Um, this is one of the few two-story homes. Most of them are one-story, so that two-story does give it a little bit more mass, you know, from, from the curb, uh, than, than what you have. And if you just look at the home outright, uh, there are five other homes that are actually smaller in size than this home on Grand Avenue. Like I said, it's, it's, it's just a little under two hundred square feet of the actual average size, and this would not be, um, you know, the smallest home on the street. About one-third of the homes, uh, would still, still, uh, be smaller than this home.
And those homes are, it looks like, and you can correct me, those homes are like usually, they're single level, so that's why they have more square footage? Or the ones I'm looking at, maybe?
Finger footprint, maybe.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, some of them are, you know, some of these are actually built over three and four of these, uh, twenty-five foot wide lots, so they, you know, it's, they just have a larger footprint. Um, in this particular case, there are two lots, and it was my understanding that the, the lot to the east, uh, was not available to purchase. So, you know, the, uh, this, this particular applicant, whose contract purchaser, uh, had the two lots to deal with. Uh, but, uh, I think it does far exceed as far as the values established by, by the ordinance. Uh, it meets that criteria. I don't think that the, the orientation or the architecture of this home is in any way detrimental or, you know, somehow deteriorous to the, to the neighborhood. And it is, and it does.
So pending, pending, um, planning commission's approval, we'll move forward and get it on the next, advertise and get it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
And these, these smaller lots that were planted back in the day, I mean, by law, we can't stop them from building on that property anyway.
That's a good observation, because if you, if you look at it as a denial, then what's the person left to do with, with the property?
Exactly.
So just as a caveat, we're in the process, we hope to have something presented in, in December. Um, but these non-conforming lots, we've talked about this in the past, Lori, I think you and Chris, uh, in particular, um, Tim's made a lot of headway with, with Doug and George as it relates to, uh, blighted properties on non-conforming lots, and incentivizing the property owner to, uh, tear it down by increasing, uh, what's allowed in code currently, so that financing incentivizes them. Also, as it relates to, uh, houses that are boarded up in the floodplain, there's a lot more flexibility we have than what the current code has. I spoke to a property owner who owns four properties in the floodplain, all of them boarded up because of previous planning director's direction, not recently, but in the past. And when I shared conceptually what the idea was, this person was thrilled to death and couldn't wait to develop four properties. So I think that's the kind of, that's where we're moving to try to, try to incentivize these, these landowners and property owners and, and small builders, et cetera, to redevelop these neighborhoods that are blighted because the, the market is dictating that. And our code is forcing that on the market.
It, we don't want one public purpose dueling with another public purpose. You know, we don't, we, we don't want them conflicting. We want them to be complementing. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Appreciate you.
Alright, next slide is a lot of six requests to receive retired avalanche for the WC Farm and Ski, Lake County.
Uh, yes, um, we have the opportunity perhaps to receive a retired ambulance for, um, emergency service or, or police function. Uh, do you wanna mention anything?
Yes, sir. What our intention is, take this vehicle and build it out for major crash scene investigations, crime scene investigations, mobile comm unit, as well as a field command unit. We wanna take this vehicle and basically make it an all-purpose mule, workhorse for the department. Um, this vehicle, if we were to try to get this vehicle on the used market, we're looking at probably a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar vehicle used that. at probably a $15,000 to $20,000 vehicle used that brother, sisters, and fire and rescue can actually donate to a sports use. It only has, don't hold me to the numbers, it has just over 120,000 miles on it, but the powertrain that's on there, it's actually a diesel vehicle. For an ambulance, it's past its, it's past its prime for running as a primary ambulance. For us, we could potentially get 10 to 15 years worth of use out of this vehicle still, so.
So there's, it has not been finalized or formalized whether we can get the vehicle for a dollar or not. Preliminary conversations that I have, in all likelihood, in the next couple of weeks, we'll find this out. The county will make a decision.
I did find that out. It was supposed to go on agenda tomorrow. There's a lot of stuff, so it got pushed, so it'll be in the first meeting in December.
Okay, so it'll be in December. The, oh gee whiz, I just blanked out, the foundation, right? Police Foundation is talking about retrofitting much of it? So I think this is something over time, they can, the foundation can make it a cause, and so the question for you tonight is, do you have any interest in us? If there's, if they're willing to gift it to us, are we willing to accept the gift? And if we're not willing to accept the gift, I can relay that as well, as a purpose.
I'd be willing to accept it.
50 cents.
I wonder why we wouldn't.
50 cents.
All right, I'll let you put it on 50 cents.
All right, very good. Thank you. Last thing, I had, Mr. Mayor, the executive order 63 and 67 as amended, it does not affect government bodies, so it happened to be the last line on page 14, after I did all this work to prepare. So Gene, we're not gonna be changing?
I saw that when I started calling, I think they probably saw.
Yeah, I saw it late. But we do need to talk about, maybe in the new year, if this, if this current situation continues, do we want, wait, do we wanna make any adjustments to the meetings? Do you want to have more remote meetings? If you have remote meetings, they're not to be in this room, and you can have your regular meetings in here, as well as your work sessions in here, we can spread it out, make it more socially distanced. I think this is gonna continue, based upon what I'm hearing from Richmond, it's gonna continue into the spring. So be thinking about if you wanna make adjustments to the meetings, if you want to go more remote. I think we still have the authority under the emergency ordinance to do that, as long as we don't violate FOIA, which now we have swag it, so people can watch live on two different channels, glow fiber and Comcast, as well as going on internet, so there's a lot of, a lot of ways for people to be involved, so.
So you're saying that still, we could have our meetings here, they just wouldn't be at the government center with the public involved, and then?
Well, it depends if you wanted to, if some of you wanted to come here in person, you could come in person, others could come in online. We could have staff remote in, online and do their briefings as opposed to coming in person, so a lot less people. You know, like tonight, I had counted, we had approximately 17, 18 people scheduled to be in here tonight, so.
A work session, though.
Well, we could do regular meetings as well.
But I'm just curious, in case somebody asks, if it's a regular meeting, how would we be able to include a public portion, or would we?
Public input, probably, we probably wouldn't do a public input. You could, you could have a podium and let the public come in here and speak, just one at a time.
I was just curious.
Depends if you wanna change your, your system.
That's something you all need to consider, if you're all interested in doing that.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Meeting adjourned?